Good evening. The November 2025 Monthly Dixon County School Board Meeting is now in session. For the record, I would like to acknowledge that all of our school board members are present except for Mr. Rick Mullins, who has requested to participate electronically. Also in attendance are Tanya Baker, our school board clerk, Scott Mullins, our school board attorney, Cohen Powers, our student, school board member, and Heidi Robinson, Division Superintendent. Mr. Mullins, could you tell us for the record why you can't attend the meeting in person tonight?
Uh, yes, personal business.
Board members, Mr. Mullins has requested to join the meeting electronically. I do have a motion to allow Mr. Mullins to join the meeting electronically due to his personal business.
So, move. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mullins, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
This time, would you please stand for the National Anthem and remain standing for the moment of silence? We're done for the play.
Pleasure, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
Of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, stand the nation, the government, the individual, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, we have an agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Mr. Hicks, there are no additions to the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? You're in on? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That brings us to our public comment section of the meeting. Mr. Hackney, will you please read our guidelines for public comment? Ms. Martin, will you please bear the timekeeper?
Period of time for public comment will be designated on the meeting agenda, during which the public may comment on issues related to public education. Dixon County School Board believes that the citizens of the county should be heard and that this is an acceptable format for receiving public comment. After the public comment section of the meeting is closed, the public shall not be allowed to participate in general board member discussions regarding agenda items. Public participation with the board members regarding agenda items can be disruptive. The practice is prohibited by Robert's Rules of Order. It is the desire of the school board to treat each member of the public fairly and equally. Allowing one individual to participate while excluding others is unfair. The board may hold such public hearings as may be necessary to allow the public to more fully express their concerns. Or the board may place the public comment section of any meeting at the end of the meeting to allow additional public comments. While we do not wish to restrict the free expression of opinion, we feel that certain restrictions may be necessary so that order and reasonable standards of decorum may be maintained. We ask that the following standards be adhered. Speaker will be recognized by the chair. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Speakers will refrain from the use of vulgarity or profanity. And will avoid negative or embarrassing comments directed towards specific children or students. Board members should not respond to issues presented by speakers unless clarification is necessary. Matters of concern raised under public comment will be referred to the proper official for investigation and future consideration, board consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Hackney. Board would like to recognize, uh, Phyllis Mullins with DEA. Phyllis here. All right, Lenore Jones with DPE.
I don't really have anything to say. I just said that I'm pleased to be here to represent the DPE and Dixon County teachers that are members of the DPE. And I'll just do what I can to help whoever I can. So, um, if y'all need anything from me, just let me know and I'll do what I can for anybody. I'm still learning what I'm supposed to do, so. If y'all know what it is, you can tell me.
I don't think that mic is on. Will you check it, Ms. Martin? Is it? All right. Board would like to recognize Ms. Shawn Wallace.
Testing.
Yeah, it's on. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Wallace.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate being able to come here and to address you all. As the board, I'm thankful for this opportunity. I'm honored to be a homeschool father. I've been homeschooling my son for nine years. Uh, it's a great blessing. I love to do it. We're really into it, as they say. And that's why I'm here, uh, to speak to you concerning, uh, the common sample privacy policy language that was provided to Virginia school boards in February and May. Uh, it's my position that the change in the language in the sample policy conflicts with Virginia homeschool instruction law in Section 22, 1-254, 1G. Uh, if the change, uh, is adopted, uh, it would allow districts to release information about homeschool families with the parent's expressed consent, expressed consent. However, the law only allows districts to release information with the written consent of a student's parents to the extent provided by the parent's consent. The new term, "express consent", would allow for verbal consent, which would exceed the lawful statutory limitations. I fear that the adoption of this change would cause increased risk of violations concerning protected privacy rights of homeschool families. The safety and privacy of our families is a very important thing. And I trust that it's important to all of you. Therefore, I want to encourage you to not adopt the new language. I know many of those who support such a change may say that the adoption of this language, this new language, will not really change anything. Well, if it's not really going to change anything, why change it? This particular action, coupled with events from earlier this year, seems to indicate that there is a very contentious spirit among many of our elected officials in Richmond toward homeschool families. So my additional concern is that the, a small, what may seemingly be a small, innocent change in language today may snowball into what could bring about a dismantling of homeschool rights in the Commonwealth over time. Remembering the great proverb of old, that mountains are moved one small stone at a time. So once again, I want to encourage this board to not adopt the new sample policy language. And I thank you very much for allowing me this time to speak to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Have anyone else for public comment? All right. Our next agenda item is the consent agenda, which includes the approval of minutes, the approval of monthly invoices, revenue and expenditure summary, discussion of school activity funds, approval of field trips, approval of new elementary school construction invoices, approval of construction bank reconciliation document, and the Dixon County Public Schools health statement account. Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next agenda item is information for the school board. Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Just, um, go over some of our items. Of course, the VSBA conference, uh, is this Wednesday, uh, the 19th through the 21st. I believe that Mr. Hicks will be attending that for us and representing Dixon County. I also would like to mention, um, to Mr. Raznick and to Mr. Hicks that, Mr. Raznick, you have a certificate from the VSBA, uh, for award of recognition. And, Mr. Hicks, you have a bronze pin, uh, which is award of achievement for your, um, participation in VSBA conferences and meetings. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to our best part. Good news from our schools, Ms. Robinson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, we, uh, we have several, uh, folks that we would, uh, we'd like to, uh, recognize. And at first, I would like to ask Ms. Miranda Knapp if she'll come to the front. Ms. Knapp is, um, the instructor that works with, um, this is why you see all these microphones and so on up here with our one-act play. And so, Ms. Knapp, welcome. It's good to have you with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, um, hearing from the theater department tonight. Uh, every fall, we do, uh, the VHSL one-act competition, which is in conjunction with other schools, as the name implies. And we, uh, with my advanced students, we get a one-act play together and we compete, just as we would in sporting events with, uh, other schools. And that competition was November 8th. So we, uh, get here bright and early and travel to another school this year. It was Union. And we watch, we present our play, and then we watch four others. So it's a great day of theater, if you enjoy that type of thing. And there are four judges that are, um, off of a, there's a judging list of probably 250 people that can be asked. They're approved judges. So we had four, uh, on that Saturday, and their purpose is twofold. They choose a first and second place overall, so we're talking about the performance. They also award outstanding actor awards. So that would be to an individual and not to a school. And if you, um, in the, just so you understand how that works, in the placement of schools, you want to get a golf score. So you want to be first, you know, so that four would probably be 1-1-1-1 in everyone's eyes. And if you're an actor, you want to get a football score. So a judge can give you five acting points, four, three, two, one. So they give, each judge, if I were a judge, I would give a student, one superior student, a five, and then another a four, a three, a two, and a one. And, uh, we took a selection that's called "The Actor's Nightmare" by Christopher Durang. It is hilarious. And I'm going to be honest with you. We knew going in that that was probably not the kind of play that would land us in first place. But we also knew that we were going to have a ball. And there seems to be a lot of, you know, woe and misery in these plays. We do that ourselves sometimes. Lots of wailing and screaming and, you know, the wide range of emotion. Well, we decided that this year, um, Cohen enjoys comedy. Cohen's a senior. You do what your seniors want to do. And they fell in love with this little comedy, he and Alyssa. So we presented this comedy, and you know, you're always worried if you're going to do a comedy that people find it, um, funny. Because doing comedy to a bunch of people not laughing, not very enjoyable. Well, we were slated to start first, and I just have to tell you, there was cackling. And I do mean the kind of cackling that you worry you're not going to get your play done in 35 minutes because they're laughing too hard and you can't speak over them. And I, I mentioned the title. It was "The Actor's Nightmare", and Cohen was the actor having the nightmare. And I think this is the first time since I've been here that one of our students had the top amount of acting points. So Cohen got 10, and it was tied with the person who got first. The, the play that got first place had an actor also get a 10. But, um, Cohen had 10 acting points that day and got the highest outstanding actor award, and we were very, very proud of him. And if you would like, I could brag on him for a long time, but I won't. If you would like to see him in action, we are performing tomorrow evening right here at 7 o'clock. And I can guarantee he will blow your mind. It is that good. I don't, um, overpromise and underdeliver. He was amazing. I've been in many plays myself, and I don't think I have ever had the task of being onstage alone for five minutes. And he did. And he did it very, very well. You would have been very proud. So I am very proud of all of our students. They represented us very well. But my purpose tonight is to tell you that, uh, Cohen Powers got the highest acting award that day, and he did a great job. Congratulations, Cohen. I'm very proud of you. I will be sad to not have you next year. Please come and support us tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations, Cohen. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Um, our next recognition, we'd like to have Mr. Robinson. You'll come to the front, please. And there are several pages of recognition. Yes, sir. I'm sorry? I can't hear. I think my mic is on.
It is.
Now, can you hear me?
A little bit.
All right. Mr. Robinson.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir. Welcome.
Thank you for having us here tonight. It's always an honor and a privilege to honor the DECA kids that have placed, um, at the DECA competition. We had it last, or not last, on, uh, November the 7th. Um, did really well. Um, tonight, I just have four that was able to make it. Do you want me to go through the whole list?
Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. All right. So what I'm going to do is, uh, just bear with me. There's, there's 20, uh, students that competed and walked away, or not walked away. They earned, uh, medals for their event. And then, uh, what I'll do is call their names. Uh, and if you're here and I call your name.
Yeah, please come up to the stage.
Okay. All right. Uh, this is the individual series events. First place is Ben Stanley. Uh, his category was business finance series. Uh, first place is Cohen Powers, hotel and lodging management. Second place is Isabella Mullins, food marketing series. Second place is Cambry Conaway, restaurant and food service management. Third place is Kennedy Wallace, human resource management. Third place is Madeline Owens, apparel and accessories marketing. Third place is Brooke Owens, quick serve restaurant management. Third place, Kyle Hale, automotive services marketing. All right. The next events are the principal events. Uh, first place, Jada Dingus, hospitality and tourism. Second place, Riley Edwards, entrepreneurship. Second place, Alexis Robinson, business management and administration. Second place, Alexa Sykes, marketing. Second place, Antoinette Wyatt, hospitality and tourism. Third place, Garrett Moore, marketing. Third place, Chelsea Staller, hospitality and tourism. Uh, freshman-only events. First place, Calista Compton, job interview. First place, Lacey Johnson, sailing. Second place, Berkeley O'Quinn, job interview. Second place, Lily Blansett, sailing. Third place, Sadie Lyle, job interview. Congratulations, guys. Y'all did an excellent job. You represented Ridge U. High School very well. You represented Ridge U High School DECA very well. So, congratulations. Thank you. Makes my life easier.
And we have several family members here, so if you please stand to be recognized also, and we'll give you a round of applause. Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome. And we're going to have your, with Mr. Robinson, if we can get him up here. With your picture, sir.
Well, I didn't want to.
No, you're not going to ruin the picture, sir.
you a picture of what the DECA competition looks like. Well, I got to thinking, and I could stand up here and talk days about it, but I think it would be best if I asked Cohen to do it, all right? And before he chimes in here, let me give you a little background on Cohen when it comes to DECA. He's the DECA president this year for Ridge U High School. His freshman year, he competed in job interview, got first place. Sophomore year, he competed in hotel and lodging management, he got first place. Junior year, he competed in hotel and lodging management, got second place. And then, this year, he competed again in hotel lodging management, and he got first place. Okay? So, I can't think of anybody any better to talk to you all about DECA and to tell you what a role play is like. So, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'll sit down. Thank you, all.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
DECA is a career and technical...
Yes, sir.
DECA is a career and technical student organization which prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, hospitality and management in high schools and colleges around the globe. DECA competition consists of an exam and a role play exam. Students complete a 100-question timed exam that are individual events. Role play business exam is onsite with the judge. Students test score and role play events score are factored in for the category. Medals are awarded for the top three scores for each event. Third place, second place, and first place medals are awarded to students competing in their respective events. First place medal winners qualified to compete at the Virginia DECA State Competition at Virginia Beach, Virginia.
Thank you so much. And let's give our round of DECA winners, the ones that are here and others that could not be here tonight, let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Thank you, parents, for being here this evening. Our next part is good news from our schools, is our enrollment. And Ms. Martin, if you'll come to the front, please.
I always have to follow these kids. They do such a fantastic job. Tonight, we'll talk about October's attendance. Again, in your packets, you have the attendance percentages, the comparison over the past five years. I gave you a list of all the entry and withdrawals for each school. There's your monthly picture, and then there's a summary of the attendance intervention committees. For the month of October, we show that we had 1,651 students enrolled in K through 12, 63 students in the pre-K, postgraduate programs, and 16 in the 3-year-old program, for a total of 1,730 students. For our monthly attendance percentage, Ridge U Elementary School, month three, you know, I told you they're keeping count, and they're very, very competitive about this. Once again, at 92.76 percent. Middle school at 91.32 percent. And that brings the district for the year at 91.30 percent. So, we're staying, we're still staying in the 91 percent. I looked at it today, so far for the month, and we're, all three schools are 94 or above. But we'll have to see what the end of the week looks like, because this week gets a little, gets a little crazy, because let's take an extra day or two with our holidays coming up. So, I'm optimistic that doesn't happen, but we'll see. For chronic absenteeism, again, you know, it's a numbers thing. If we end school at the end of October, we're looking a little rough. But if we go 180, we're looking really well. The elementary school's at 2 percent for chronic absenteeism right now. The middle school's at 1 percent, and the high school's at 5 percent. So, we're doing real well with chronic absenteeism. The committees and the school and the attendance clerks and everyone involved is working really hard at that. As far as the attendance intervention committees, they're working right now to come up with some ideas for the upcoming Christmas, in between Thanksgiving and Christmas, because that notoriously is a time when a lot of kids miss. And so, they're trying to come up with some fun activities to engage the kids and get them here. We're all working on our newest billboard, and I'm not going to, I'm not even going to give you a sneak on what that's going to be, because it's, we're pretty excited about it. So, I'm just going to wait. I'm going to let you wait and see what it is, because we don't want to spoil the surprise on that one. Are there any questions about attendance enrollment or chronic absenteeism at this
Just wanted to take a moment to thank all of our schools and our staff members, who are all working very hard with attendance and doing a lot of fun activities during the day for our students. Thank you, Ms. Martin, for all you do.
We're not going to do that.
Hold that thought, Ms. Martin. If the board will, I'd just like to request a five-minute recess. I think you're motion for that. So moved. Second. All right, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need one, but can I get a motion to reopen our meeting?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item on our agenda, Ms. Martin, is the revision of the D C P S policy, L B D, home instruction.
Thank you, sir. I sent this policy to you a week, a couple of weeks ago, and just wanted to clarify The V S B A sent out an email to us, giving more clarity to us as well as to why they were revising the policy. And I'm just going to read from the body of the email that they sent us. I sent you a copy of that, but I'm just going to read that for everyone else's information as well. It says, "As you may call, as you may recall, earlier this year, the Home Educators Association of Virginia expressed similar concerns regarding the sample, the same sample policy on March 28, 2025. Former Director of Legal and Policy Services sent correspondence addressing concerns expressed the V S B A's position. Following the correspondence, V S B A revised sample policy, L B D, as part of the May 2025 policy." This is a policy that we approved in July. Among other policies, the revision clarified that the school board or superintendent may disclose certain information only with the written consent of a parent and only to the extent provided by the parent's consent. Specifically, the May 2025 revision removed the word "express," and specifically, the consent word must be written. In addition, it clarified that the disclosure may only be made to the extent provided in the written consent. And then, it goes on and lists the different codes that refer to homeschooling. So, just a brief summary, they went in in November and then did some more clarifying on some of the language of the policy. And so, basically, they, to clarify some of the things in the policy, they clarified that this included students receiving home instruction under 22.1-254-1, and students exempt from attendance due to bona fide religious training or beliefs under 22.1-254. So, they revised some of the legal references as well is the reason why they did the revisions. But in the May revisions, they did change the word from "express" to "written." So, I did send you that policy, and I will answer any questions to the best of my ability at this point.
Well, this is the policy that Mr. Wallace referred to earlier.
Correct.
And I think this new policy is in response to and aligns with what the homeschool association, their complaints were with the old language of the policy, and aligns all that back together.
Correct. That is correct. And so, I think from reading the email that was sent, the homeschool association had concerns with the word "express," and so, they went to the V S B A, then they changed it in May, which we then, it was July when we adopted the policy. And then, they've gone furthermore to go back, they've gone back in November and done another clarification to make sure that they had the correct codes of Virginia listed in the policy, is why I'm bringing it back to you again.
And the red letters is the part that's going to be changed.
Correct.
And I just noticed this is only with the written consent of the parent.
Correct.
And only authorized, and only what's to the extent authorized by that parent's consent.
Correct.
So, I think it really aligns with Mr. Wallace's point from earlier.
Correct. And that's what I had sent you in the email, for you folks to have time to review before I brought it to you this evening for approval for adoption.
Any questions for Ms. Martin?
Here none, then I would ask for your approval for this policy adoption.
I will move to approve that new policy update.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martin.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the S O L cut scores and school performance and support framework process update. Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you. Board members, last week, the Virginia Board of Education met and approved a new proficiency implementation regarding the S O L's cut scores. And so, listed on your board packet are the four issues that the Board of Education voted on, which is a four-year phased-in model, and which means that the '25, '26 school year will remain the same, will be a preparation year, and then the proficient cut score will remain at 400. And then, at the start of the '26, '27 school year, new cut scores will be implemented. That was number one. Number two, that students retaking, the S O L assessment must only meet the passing score in effect at the time of their original test. So, if students take the S O L test and the cut scores or the minimum scores were 400, that's what they have to pass, not the higher score. Students, number three, students that have demonstrated proficiency on high school E O C assessments or earned verified credits will not be required to retake the assessment. And then, number four, we should have clear student assessments reports in the spring of '26 explaining parents and school divisions, the new proficiency levels and available support. So, that's what was passed, and it's good to know that for the '25, '26 school year, we are going to use this year as a preparation year, and we don't, and the cut scores for the S O L test will remain at 400. The last time that we were here together, I shared with you that we still did not have the final division ranking, and we still are working through those. A third-party consultant was hired last month. They're still going through the data and have yet have not completed their work. So, therefore, school divisions have not received the school's final division ranking on its S O L performance for the '24, '25 school year. So, this is just an informational item for the board. We will continue to provide updated information to you, but as of right now, it seems like it's good news as far as the S O L cut scores. They will remain the same for the '26, I'm sorry, for the '25, '26 school year. They will remain the same for the '26, I'm sorry, for the '25, '26 school year. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is the clarification of attendance policy IKF. Mrs. Robinson.
Thank you. Again, this is another policy clarification. Two years ago, we added the participation of 10% component in the rubric, in the grading rubric. And we strongly believe that regular attendance, active participation, and consistent effort are real essential components of a student's educational success. The policy as it was written, we felt that it was not clear. And so after talking with our staff and also with parents, we have gone back and revised that policy. And if I may, I'd like to read it to you. "Teachers and instructional staff shall determine the categories and the respective weights for calculating grades for each subject during each nine-week grading period. 10% of the total nine-week grade shall be based on the student's participation, engagement, effort, and attendance in class." Here is the point of change. "Points shall be deducted when a student is not present, even if the absence is excused if the student fails to actively participate or does not demonstrate appropriate engagement and effort during the instructional time. The daily participation grade deducted is 0.22. Teachers shall communicate the method of determining the grade to students and parents and guardians at the beginning of the school year semester." So again, it's only 10% of the grade, a daily participation grade, whether it's attendance, whether it's participation, is .22. And so we feel that this is only a very small, but hopefully, it's something that will encourage our students to come, to be present, to show up. There are too many things that happen during the instructional time that cannot be covered in a Google Meet doing worksheets. So again, we just ask your consideration of approving this clarification of attendance and policy IKF. And I'll certainly take any questions or comments that you may have or in our discussions.
Any questions, anyone? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Do I have a motion to approve the clarification of attendance policy IKF?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next agenda item is the approval to pay bills after November the 21st and December the 19th. Ms. Lacy Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. The Financial Department would like to request the board's approval to pay invoices after tonight's meeting and also after our December the 17th school board meeting. Since we have these meetings earlier in the month, it makes it really hard for our accounts payable to get everything in and processed in time. And if we could just pay invoices between meetings, it would help us avoid any late penalties on anything. And we'll, of course, keep you informed at the following board meeting of anything that we have to pay. If they have any questions?
We've done this normally for the last few years.
We have, yes.
Do I have a motion to approve and pay bills after November the 1st and December the 19th, 2025?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Ms. Edwards. All right, this time we will have board comments. I usually don't mean this. You want to go first, Mr. Patterson? Ask the others. Now, you're going to give the, I give you the option. You can say no. They might not want to follow you because you've got some real acting chops over there as well here.
I guess I can go first.
Okay.
I would just like to say thank you to the board for recognizing the students' accomplishments. I know I wasn't recognized, boss, but just in general, having someone recognize your accomplishments while you're in high school is really appreciated. It shows that people are caring what we do and our accomplishments. So just thank you for that. I was also glad to see that, to hear from the efforts for a team that's supporting Thanksgiving improvements. That'll be good to look forward to. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mullins, you can follow that.
I got it.
Oh, board comments, Mr. Mullins?
Hello, board. Yeah. Well, it's good to be here. Thank y'all for allowing me to participate today electronically. And I think, you know, I was thinking today that looking back at the last 30 days, we have not heard, I have not heard one complaint. Everything is going really well academically with the school. Our athletic teams are doing great, and I'm just, I'm elated that we've gotten this far and things are very, very positive.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins. Mr. Bannon?
Just want to say real quick, you know, to recognize Ms. Neff and the One Act Play crew and especially Mr. Powers here, our student representative, and then Coach Robb, I call him Coach Robb, but Mr. Robinson and our DECA students apparently shone brightly during this competition. And once again, I think Mr. Powers did well on that also. So, but you know, I know mentioning the theater and the DECA, and I know a lot of times our SOL classes, they get most of the attention and, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our talking about the education in schools, but our non-SOL classes also are extremely important. And I think we see here usually on a monthly basis how we have teachers that are dedicated and see that these students succeed in almost everything that they undertake here at the high school or in any of our schools. I think that's wonderful to see Ms. Neff and Coach Robb here tonight. I'm also glad to see the clarification of the attendance policy. I think that was needed for, you know, better communication between us and the parents and students so that they understand that just a little bit clearer. So other than that, that's all I got.
All right. Well, I'll just echo what's been said. It's always great to be up here and recognize our students and their accomplishments and their sponsors and coaches. And you know, I'd just like to just say, hey, you know, thank you for all that you do. You know, congratulations to our athletic teams and what they've done, and good luck football team that continues to go. And most of all, just enjoy your break here and enjoy your family and Thanksgiving. Mr. Redd?
Well, I certainly echo everything that David said. He covered about everything. Certainly, all the students that we recognize and that will be and have been. It's quite an honor to reach those levels of place. And I know the work it takes to get there, and I certainly commend those that take that challenge and meet that challenge. I'm just hopeful everybody has a safe and happy holiday and get ready to come back and look at some SOLs, baby. And it's a busy time, and we know that.
Well, I guess I'll sound like a broken record, but everybody has hit on all the key points, and I'll kind of reiterate that. I was glad to see the students recognized tonight from theater and DECA. Having been a former drama student myself, I know how difficult it is. I still have nightmares about it sometimes, but it helped me learn that Hollywood was not going to be my future. So that was a good part. I also appreciate Ms. Robinson as far as attention to detail on our attendance policy and the homeschool policy. I think both of those, addressing those tonight was good and will save us from, you know, some confusion and any issues going forward. I also congratulate the volleyball team on it. They had a great season this year. Football team is continuing in the playoffs this week, so good luck to them. And I would also say, I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Hackney. Mr. Powers, next month he's about to have FFP last, so. All right, here we go. At this time, we go into closed session. Closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A of the Code of Virginia. There will be a closed meeting for the purpose of, one, employment issues relating to discussion or consideration of specific individuals for employment such as head custodian, part-time aides, substitutes, resignations, retirements pursuant to Virginia Section Code 2.2-3711A1; and, two, to consult with legal counsel regarding the investment of public funds associated with school construction and consolidation regarding, consolidation, consultation regarding actual or probable litigation, along with consultation regarding specific matters requiring legal advice pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A67 and 8 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there a motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now out of closed session. Mrs. Robinson, will you please read the certification?
Whereas, the Dixon County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Dixon County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only the public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard, discussed, or considered. Would you please certify?
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
I certify.
All right. Are there any motions coming from closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve employment recommendations as presented in closed session.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you have any other business to discuss?
Mr. Chair, the playoff game will be scheduled on Saturday at 2:00 p.m.
Saturday.
This coming Saturday at 2:00 p.m.
All right, thank you very much.
Against Lebanon.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me neither.
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 Any opposed?
Me neither.